Next, when we move on to public safety, you'll see an increase in this function of $49,551. Public safety dysfunction is made up of the Sheriff's Department, Detention Center, Emergency Management, Building Inspections, Animal Control, and Fire Service. This increase of $50,000 in this function is, I think this is the best-case scenario. Because when you look at things that are obligations that the county has to meet in public safety, and it only increased $50,000, that is an accomplishment. And that's taken a lot of pencil sharpening, a lot of negotiating, and a lot of people willing to answer in public safety that is one of our, that is our top priority, how to answer the question of what's important now in terms of the meeting of future needs. And working with the department heads in dysfunction, like all department heads, I just, I really appreciate their willingness to sit down at the table and work with me and with us and getting this place put together. And I feel that this, again, this $50,000 is an accomplishment. Because I can take you right now to page 21 in the General Fund Expenditures. And them pages guys are up in the right-hand corner, right? I know y'all, this is my first time, so it took me, I never did know what pages was actually yesterday, Lord, we showed. If you'll look, there's a $100,000 increase in the medical treatment for the jail. And I have my numbers here. Current fiscal year, this line item, we budgeted $100,000 for the current fiscal year. Was that, and what is that right? So if you look back in fiscal year 13, fiscal year 13, 14, year-to-date, we're at $152,000 in this. And the sheriff's here, and we're in his function, that his department's in, he wants to strip a little bit too, this here Andy. But when we, when we take a prisoner into our custody, from the minute we take that prisoner in, his medical responsibility is the responsibility of Macon County. Anything that happens to him while he is in custody of the Macon County Sheriff's Office is, has to be accounted for by the county. We have, the sheriff and Andy were able to locate an insurance provider this year. And we've sat down and worked with this gentleman, and we're looking at purchasing insurance on the inmates that we take into custody. And this would apply, and we'll really see savings accrued when those claims go over $10,000. And the cost of this insurance is...
Seventy-one cents a day, as of arrest.
Seventy-one cents a day, as of arrest. So we're looking at a cost, yearly cost of $20,000. But we had, how many incidences did we have last year that was over 10?
Several.
Several. Several incidences over $10,000.
We got one right now that exceeds all those combined.
Absolutely.
Right now.
Right. And if you look at 12, 13, this line item was $291,000.
So another thing we need to mention, Sheriff, is the reason this is important, the bill that's in the legislature, send the missed minutes back to your jail for extended stay is going to cost the county, it's going to cost your department money, and not to mention, the more people you got there, the more likely you'll need this insurance. So if that bill passes, we could make this board aware, don't be surprised if you see you come back, if that bill, it looks like it's, and I don't know if you got, if you can get the numbers on that, Andy, how many that would have been, but we know it would have been at least 52. That's what we know by the number, so that's, that could be a big increase.
Right. And so if budgeting $200,000 in this line this year, and that is including that $20,000 that we're going to purchase that insurance with, this number, we feel, I mean, we're, you never know what can happen, but with that insurance, we certainly feel, and we certainly think we're going to have a cushion, and that was an excellent move by the Sheriff's Department to get that, that's going to be a cushion we didn't have before.
I think that'll help us see.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely. Another thing this company's going to do is they're going to scrub the bills when they come in. So many times in the insurance business, and I'm sure you're aware, you get double billed, there's all kinds of...
Kevin's going to be paying?
Exactly. He don't pay bills.
Oh.
The providers, they'll bill something twice through... But this is, this, when they scrub the bills, this is something, I mean, it sounds minor, they're just looking through the bills, but this saves thousands and thousands of dollars. And they showed us when they were in that meeting with us, and it was really...
You and I talked about this and talked to the sheriff about it, you're turning a variable cost into a fixed cost. And bottom line, that's what you're doing. You're saying we're, our maximum exposure is now this.
Right.
Whereas now, why don't go like this? Right. So, which my budget carries, makes a lot of sense.
Absolutely. Also, right below that, if you'll look at the next line item, that is your food service line item. Mr. Bill just pointed to the extended stays that we're seeing with inmates, and how that's only going to increase when they send the missed minutes back to the jails. This extended stay combined with, when an angel was bought by Mission, a 35 cent increase in the cost per meal. And when you start talking about three meals a day, increased stays, people aren't going to quit committing crimes. We saw this line out, and just like the medical treatment, continue to escalate. In 13, 14, year-to-date, right now, we're at $236,425. Last year, we had budgeted in this line, $230,000. So we're $6,425 double budget right now. 12, 13, actual, if you look back, $256,788 was what was spent out of this line. So in this, in adding this $50,000 to fiscal year 13, 14, that's going to bring that number to $280,000. And we're going to do the best we can with that. Again, that's, we've not been able to take the variable cost and turn it into a fixed cost here. So there's still that, there's still that room, and there's still that uncertainty in that line item, but $280,000 should be sufficient to cover our food costs for the next year. Some notable decreases, if you will look on page 25 in your General Fund Expenditures, that is the emergency medical service, this is decreased by $91,000 from fiscal year 13, 14. And this is primarily attributable to one ambulance instead of two. One ambulance at $125,000, last year budgeted, we got two new ambulances, that was $250,000. Mr. K, anytime you got anything, feel free to jump in. That was, that's mainly what that decreases attributable to, in that fund. Another notable decrease in the public safety function is the building inspections department. Building inspections, we had a sedentation and road control officer, he left. He served for, how long did he hear Matt about?
Little over a year.
Little over a year. And that was a position Matt used to have before he became the county planner. And Matt's doing a great job, and so when he left, as we all know, in Macon County, we issued, I think, 50 building permits last year. And that's, you know, that's coming from New York where we were turning out 360.
Seven, three hundred.
Seven, three hundreds in building permits. And media don't quote that 360, I don't know if it's close, but, you know, we've seen that, and there's not that much, there's not that much building, there's not that much construction-related activity going on. So we decided to dissolve that position, and Mr. Mason has jumped in there and helped us, and he's not only doing the duties of county planner, he's reassumed his overall of sedentation and road control officer. And by doing that and absorbing that position, we were able to save $5,654 in building inspection department. And again, that's page 24 in the General Fund Expenditures.
Mr. Rollins, can I address the board very quickly?
Absolutely.
Obviously, y'all know that I'm, heard we need to come back into this process, and the budget request was actually submitted, was crafted before I came along. Mr. Rollins, the board asked that I go through and take a look at what was actually submitted, and see what we can work out with our folks. One of the biggest things that I have found, when I went back and talked to my folks and looked at their numbers, that they're staffing, and I know you've got all sorts of folks that have come and asked for folks or people or personal employees. The problem that I have with, particularly EMS, where you're on or off, I have needs everywhere, 911 office, we're dispatching almost 34,000 calls a year now with the same two telephones computers we had back in 95. That also, that directly impacts your service, it also directly affects your fire departments, because roughly 20% of the rating points that they get is based on our telephone inventory. One of the most important things you've done is you've upgraded the phone system to 911 office. Next year, when I come back to you, not only will I be able to tell you how many calls we've put in the computer system, I can tell you what time they came in, when the telephone call was answered, how long it took us to answer, how long we were on the phone, and how that plays out in the big scheme of things. So by this time next year, I'll have a good handle on where our staff is at, and our entire office, I know more about the numbers, I can come back and talk to you more intelligently about what our needs are there. I've also, all people also understand what it's like sitting in a chair like that and trying to crack the puzzle, trying to help these numbers come together. But one of the things I was starting to like for you to consider this year is staffing our EMS folks. One of the thoughts that we've had, and my staff all reiterated this to me when I met with them, right when I came on board, the numbers all add up to justify what I'm going to ask you for, and I have all sorts of documentation. And the proposal I'm going to lay on the board for you is basically staying within the same numbers that we have, basically trading the ambulance and about $1,500 worth of uniform money to take two more folks and make a day shift truck we've got into a 24-hour truck. What we'll basically do is we'll change the hours for those folks, they'll go to a modified 24-hour schedule. For those of you that don't know, right now, during the daytime from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., we have five ambulances in Macon County. You have three in Franklin, one in Highlands, and one down in Hail. 6 o'clock at night to 6 o'clock in the morning, you drop down to two ambulances in Franklin, one in Highlands, and one down in Hail. What we would do with the money is we would take, we would add two more employees, the day shift truck would go to a 24-hour schedule. At 8 o'clock at night, we go from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., we change hours from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. 8:00 at night, one of those folks comes off the truck, they go on what's called a QRV, which some, some of what I drive, has got all the medical stuff on the truck. They do three things. They fill in the gaps when we get behind them. They do third people, third person, third set of hands when we have a very critical patient. For instance, the other day, we had one going to Asheville on ventilator, took two people in the back. They fill in the gaps, they take care of the third person thing. The third thing they do is probably about five years ahead of its time. With Affordable Care Act, obviously, insurance companies and your other payment agencies do not want patients to go to ERs unnecessarily. Next three to five years, you're going to see a bigger push to have patients refer somewhere besides EDs, particularly folks that have been in the hospital and released. There's going to be more checks on those folks so they don't return to that hospital or that facility in 30 days because they won't be paying for it. There's going to be a bigger push from state and North Carolina to the regional healthcare facilities such as Mission Hospital, but we'll put more emphasis on pre-hospital folks doing treatments in the field, and maybe instead of referring you to ER, we'll send you to urgent care. We'll send you to your physician tomorrow, we treat you and release you, and do other things. This is the first step, about three to five years ahead of what that process is going to be to get us in line for that. So I actually have that proposal for you to stay within that budget. I have a thousand pages of documentation of their COVID numbers coming in. I can remember four numbers, 1, 1, 3, and 5. Day before yesterday, Thursday, at about 6:34 p.m., we had one trip to Mission Hospital from Highlands, Gex, and Hawthorne, emergency. Got to go. We're the only game in town. There's your first number one. That particular time of day, we got two trucks in Franklin, one in Highlands, one down in Hail. The truck in Franklin goes to Highlands to care for Highlands, while Highlands is going to Asheville. At that particular time, you've got one truck left in Franklin, to cover all the way from the Georgia line to the Plank County line. Approximately 8:30 that night, we had three ambulance calls in the Franklin area, and then cleared about 30 minutes. Two of them were emergency, one of them non-emergency. Two of those folks, I couldn't give them anything. They called us, they called 911, they didn't want to know what the tax rate was, they didn't want to know what the bond balance was, they didn't care where we were at, they didn't care who we took after. They wanted an ambulance, and we didn't have it. I've been here less than a month, and that's happened five times. Now, I can sit here and tell you that I'm 98% efficient. We lay hands on about 150 patients a week, we transport, plan 125 of those folks. If I only missed two of those last week, I'm roughly 98% efficient. Most jobs does pretty good. For those two people, didn't really matter, they didn't care what it was. If you agree to do this proposal, we can do without the equipment this year on ambulance, we'll make it another year. We'll have to pay the piper somewhere, because we're going to have to replace an ambulance somewhere down the line, but we're rigging up one for about $80,000. Hopefully, I can find you some savings in the budget next year, when I look through your salaries and trim some things, use some internal thought process on how we staff, we got some capital things in there, like some roof repairs that will go away next year. But I really and truly believe this is the best option you can get to get better service for our folks, and still stay within budget confines, and we certainly respect what that is your consideration.
As liaison to that department, I've had the opportunity to discuss this with the board and state his proposals, and I agree with his thought process on this. This department is, not every hour, but certain hours of the day is extremely overwhelmed. And again, if you're stating, if you're that person in need, and you're waiting and waiting and waiting on an ambulance, it's not a good thing. Economically, I think this is the best thing, choose what I would call the proposal number one on here. I hate that we're having to put up an ambulance because we're just keeping the can down the road, but based upon our constraints, I don't know what else to do. You know, in a perfect world, we'd get a new ambulance, and we'd hire these, and we'd hire a new dispatcher, et cetera. Andy's a staffing burden, but it's not, probably going to be an option this year, but based upon that, I'm fine with this proposal, and it's certainly not increasing our budget at this point. I'd also like the thought of you being able to be in this department for a year, and coming back to us next year, reviewing your staffing considerations, and I know after your past couple years here, you have a whole new idea of how budgets work from our perspective.
They're a pleasure to work with. But one of the other things in that proposal is to actually put shift supervisor on each shift, which has been kicked around for the last two, three years. That gives us some tighter controls on the folks that are there to help manage these policies. The other thing I'd respect to ask the board to do sometime in the very near future is talk to Mission Hospital and ask them to increase the hours of their transport trucks that's here in Franklin. They would love to hear that from us, that'll also help take some burden off us.
And then the number four and five, number one, Eric, would be that on our future list on like that statement.
One of what's absolutely amazing, I was at that mission, lived before life for several, I visited several days for a while, every day, I either saw the boys from Franklin I knew that was at the ER, or met the ambulance coming or going, or they were sitting at the ER at Mission. I mean, every time I went down there, I mean, it's just, it's amazing. So when you say that Mission do more transport, explain that a little bit.
Mission has a critical care transport truck west in Franklin that comes here today. They leave Asheville at 6:00, they get here between 7:00 and 8:00. They usually leave here about 5:00 and go back to Asheville. They cover every critical care transport that gets referred to them, going back to the Mission campus for every county from Haywood to Cherokee County. For the last three or four years, Charlie Lincoln, who's a friend of mine, who's their director over there, they have asked to increase their staffing to 24 hours. Ideally, what my suggestion, probably in their shoes, would be to add a 24-hour truck, keep the one they've got now, bring it from Asheville over here during the daytime, send this truck to Murphy. They've got two trucks during the day to cover all their stuff out here, drop back to one at night near Franklin. We could give them first shot in the nighttime, or even during the daytime, we'll have those folks go out in Hail and to let them take the missions, that frees up our resources and keeps us from having to add folks down the line to keep our trucks in town when we're trying to speed. And I think a letter of support from us, Craig James, who's the president, or CEO of Hospital up in Highlands, is now going to be the vice president of the Western Interregional Mission Hospital Health System, I've already met with him, he's done more with that, and he would certainly like to have our support.
Are you going to provide a list?
I'd be glad to draft a letter, somebody will sign.
Get a number list, get first.
One, we got you here, and I'm going to ask you a lot of questions. It looks like this, basically, gathering here...
What page are we?
Page six, the revenues, it looks like we're gaining about $1.3 million in revenue. If you could just, you probably already typed out the quantities and make sure we're charging similarly to what other counties are charging.
Yes, sir. I don't know when your last rate structure change has been made. I'll certainly be glad to take a look at that from the point now, and no later than next, but here we come back and look at our revenue structure. Also, we need to anticipate that more of the treatment release type processes will be coming in the next three to five years. We need to do some sort of complete structure for those. I've been telling somebody on the floor, I have no intention of charging those folks, but if we're actually doing medical procedures for those folks and referring them somewhere else, and there's no revenue strain coming back to us, then that's part of that funding formula through the Affordable Care Act that we can, we can run the process with.
And then, second question, I've kind of mentioned, I know you and I have already talked about it, so the other commissioners will be aware, we presently use a company out of Macon, Georgia to do our billing, and I presume they take a percentage, or I'm not sure if you pay them a fee or whatever, but I know a few people mentioned me that it's confusing because of the Macon County slash Macon, Georgia. There's some confusion in there, I don't know if there's a way to change that, or if there's a way to even keep that locally, the Keith test, money here versus sending it back to Georgia.
We can certainly look at the company. My recommendation would not be doing billing in-house.
Sure.
Because of the intricacies with dealing with Medicare, Medicaid.
Sure.
And the one foul that you have, improperly bill one of those agencies, the penalty you will pay will go way beyond what you will save by not doing it in-house. But I also, if I take away that company, see how they're doing, and what they're wanting to see, our financial...
Since I'm a commissioner, I think that's going to be how, if it's awarded to them every year, something.
That company, it was a truck before.
Probably before I came, so we've just been to RG 6211 for years.
Thank you, Senator. That's excellent. Is there, as we go through, is there general consensus, board, if there's changes we may make in the budget, to dial in, to make the questions concerned about? Next, we will move on to Human Services. Mr. Reddick was talking about that, we've gone through General Government and Public Safety at some point, are there any questions about those areas, any of them? Line items, and then you guys go over this, like I haven't. I've got questions on your own, if there's anything that you need to clarify in General Government and Public Safety, if you've gone through that.
Apparently thoroughly managed, if you may add any questions.
We need to talk, it's just time to talk about the Sheriff's Department and the problems that we have there. If you recollect, like, gentlemen, we had two escapees from Macon County Jail. They escaped through the fence that's been on request, I know for two years, to be reparented. And the reparent on the fence is about $10,500. So with the sheriff being here, you've got to find the money to fix the things, and I'd like the sheriff to fix that.
Without going into detail, I prefer not to, the exact location of this spot, but it is a spot that we've been concerned about, and not only will it address this certain spot, but it will address the complete perimeter around the detention center. And I just, I feel like, you know, we see a need for it, we knew there was a need for it. Now that we had an escape, for me to go back and say that we can put this off, I'm going to put that monkey on yours back. To be honest with you, the need is there, we've proven why the need is there, we've got to fix it, we have an obligation to fix it. We got really lucky to be able to get these guys back in custody by the end of the day. It's been an embarrassment to us, and I don't want to see it happen again. So whatever we have to do as an agency to get it done, we're going to do it, we've already talked with the county manager, but we honestly need assistance and this funding to be able to do this. We've gone back and we've made a lot of cuts, and we just, we just don't have the money that we can go back, get our budget, and find that $10,600. So we need you all to step up and help us.
Mr. Chairman, as Lee's on to the Sheriff's Department, I've asked the county manager to give him direction and put that on the list of some money that he, if we work through the budget, we could put some money else, whatever we have to do to live the day.
Is there some kind of cameras out there involved?
Sure is, sure is. The last attempted escape we had, that was, I just happened to be the lucky person to be standing out there when it happened. In about 24 seconds, they made it over one fence, made it over to the other fence, crossed it, and were at the third fence, and were coming up the fence. When they started up the fence, I just happened to be standing outside my office, otherwise he would have been gone. He's now in prison for attempted escape, but he could, you know, about another 10 seconds, he'd have been over the fence. And basically, what we're doing is, the Constantine wire that goes across the top, what this will do is this will be another layer of Constantine wire, plus it'll be some welded poles that come out, to where when they go up, they then literally would have to crawl upside down and back and go through another strand of Constantine wire. And what they had done with the one strand of Constantine wire is they had spray bottles that they used to clean the dinner trays that we buy the dinners from the hospital, and they had used the spray nozzle to pull down on the wire. Now, you can't see all of that happening. We do have cameras, we have more cameras than we did have when we took office, but we've put more cameras in, but you don't see everything that's going on, the exact location that they escaped. You see certain parts of things that are going on, and I don't want to go into detail. I will privately look at that.
But the bottom line is that the money it costs to track down the two escapees, we could fix them.
Okay. Mr. Reddick, thank you. Note that. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions concerning public safety? Any line items?
Eric, I've got one on some departments. What's the deal with Portman's College Insurance? Those required to have, which departments are there as...
The entire...
Office employees.
Right, yeah.
And that's some sort of state?
Yeah, I think once you get over, certainly it's, once you get over, consider it a pretty employee, you get...
It's less than five, you have to provide work.
And that's defined by job cluster, is that other rate is said, is that more, I mean, is that...
We are owned and led by the Carolina Association of Ambulance Police, of the Air Force, and several other bodies.
And a certain department is not reflected in the line items, is that different, Paul?
We have a lot of different departments, plus the other departments, that's the five or four.
And what is the rate?
If they're in space on high class.
Job cluster.
Your interest in that, they got the revenue sheet to accommodate.
The state, I'll be right back. Well, I guess about 8, 1, 8, 5, and 1, which is 12, 18, 19.
And that, and that part of your, okay, so what Mike does, or what the board does, you're paid less for them than you are for hand for labor.
Yes.
Or maintenance.
The day they are hired.
We have a number of high risks between our sheriff's deputies, our EMTs, our landfill folks, we go through, and they're paid for makers, and makers.
Mr. Higgins, I'll add to that, we're not even allowed to let our inmates that have work release, who have jobs, we're not even allowed to let them go out on the week... release, who have jobs, we're not even allowed to let them go out on the weekend work release unless they're, uh, the business improves and they have work, and that's not strictly the...
Thank you, Mr. Franklin, you're right, you're right.
We're in Kansas, and, and we're in our size, and we look at what we pay, what we get, we're going to get the best, everybody here, and we got the best people in, in there, and, and, again, just like I commented on all, all these departments, we got, we got some great...
Moving on to...